For a pledge to the flag. To the flag, the United States of America. To the republic. For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. All right. So can we have a roll call attendance by the secretary, please?
Peru? Mr. Frino?
Here.
Mr. Marinacho?
Yeah.
Mr. Maselli?
Yeah.
Mr. Perachicos?
Yeah.
Mr. Flower?
Here. Okay. All the board members received the minutes from the April 5th meeting. If anybody has, doesn't have any questions, concerns, need to be addressed, entertain a motion to approve them as written.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right. Our first item on the agenda this evening is the Smith three lot subdivision. At the request of the applicant, the applicant has requested to adjourn this to May the 17th. We get a motion to adjourn this item to the 17th.
You so move.
Second.
Motion's made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, seeing none, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next item on the agenda this evening is the Downey Energy Liquid Propane Storage Adjourned Public Hearing. It's time, can we get a motion to open the adjourned public hearing?
I'll move that.
Okay.
Okay, motion moved. Do we have a second?
Yes. I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. I guess we could start with, before we open the floor to public comment, maybe we could get the applicant to update us on some, anything that's come up in between now, last meeting and now, to answer and address some of the questions and concerns that were brought up from the previous meeting.
Okay, I guess that'll be me.
Okay, if you choose so.
Okay. And also, after I complete my little presentation, I'd like Jody Amadon, who didn't have an opportunity to speak at last, last month's public hearing, to sort of rebut some of the comments that were made by, by one of the members of the public, so I'm going to quickly go through what's transpired and perhaps she can fill in the missing pieces. Now, aside from some of the engineering comments from Pete's office and Malcolm's office, which I kind of think we have a pretty good handle on, we convened a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Mr. Silvestri, who, who had most of the comments concerning the safety measures of, or, or what he perceived to be the lack of safety measures with the, with the LP installation. He brought his, his expert witness as well, I'll call him expert witness, everybody's familiar with Steve Van Buren, to sit alongside Dan. I believe we sent to the board a little synopsis of that meeting. Myself, I was there, Jody Amadon, our consultant, who you know very well, was there, Carrie Downey, the applicant, Mr. John Hart, who is also on retainer by Mr. Downey. I'm sure many of yous know Mr. Mr. Hart, Mr. Thrasher, who will be the contractor on the job installing the LP tanks and the infrastructure related to the, to the LP tanks. So the meeting, basically, I, I think part of the perception was that we hadn't gone down this, this road before and spoken to your board and the planning and the town board and the fire chief and the other participants, Howard Prager, the fire, the fire inspector as well, that this was like our first time out of the gate, so to speak. And I think that the presentation that was made was such that Mr. Silvestri and Mr. Van Buren, not that they were surprised by the nature of how the whole project kind of has its act together, but a lot of things came out of it, the construction of the tanks, the construction of the safety valves, the fact that we're in 2021, we're not in 2010, and, 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 and there are, are fewer and fewer, if any, incidents regarding these types of facilities due to the redundant nature of, of the safety features. So I, I, I like to think that they were not surprised, but pleasantly surprised that, that all of these things were, were put in place. One of the big questions that, 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 that was brought up by Mr. Van Buren in particular, and Mr. Silvestri, let me prompt by saying, he belongs to the fire department down at Fishkill, so he is, you know, somewhat versed in firefighting capabilities, et cetera, et cetera. So the big question came up was the response time from a local fire departments, if there was in fact a, an emergency, who would be the first one? Which vehicle, which pumpers, which facility would come out and be the first ones on the, on, on the site? And again, we, we went through all of this with the fire chief in New Hamburg and, and, and some of the other people, but it was still being questioned. And I guess if, if, if anything else, the best thing that came of it was, okay, listen, we'll take, we have our 30,000 gallon tank for fire suppression purposes. We won't wait until a, a pumper truck is on, on board, so to speak. We agreed to put a, a onsite pump with the, with the accommodating generator, et cetera, et cetera, to have that hydrant, if you will, pressurized right from the get-go, so you have a positive water pressure there and you're not waiting or dependent upon a pumper truck to, to fi- to, to fight any incidents, so to speak. And I thought that, given the, the, the explanation by our consultants, Mr. Silvestri and Mr. Van Buren went away quite happy. Of course, Mr. Silvestri also, I, I should say, he would have liked to have seen the, the tanks turn 90 degrees so that they don't face north to south, they face east to west, if there was an incident and these things, which they don't do, propel themselves like a rocket, they go into the swamps, et cetera, et cetera. Those things don't happen. I mean, it's, it's, but, you know, at the end of the meeting, Mr. Silvestri agreed, okay, we'll keep the tanks the same way. I spoke to Mr. Silvestri this morning, and perhaps he was a little confused because he thought as part of the so-called agreement, that in addition to, for us to pressurize the hydrant with our own onsite pumping station, et cetera, et cetera, that he was going to get a deluge system, a deluge system to throw water, if you will, on, on, on the tanks. I'm going to let Jody later explain to you what happens when there are incidents. Again, most of the incidents, they involve, you know, I don't want to say connections, coupling, uncoupling, those types of incidents. Mr. Hart, one of the consultants, happened to mention that should there be an incident on the job site, it, any fires or any flames renders those deluge systems useless. Water just, you know, a fire or an incident melts whatever's there and water just sprays all over the place. Certainly, Mr. Downey would be agreeable to anything just to satisfy and be over redundant in terms of any safety. But the feeling is, was and still is, that a deluge system really doesn't do anything to satisfy what we're trying to accomplish here. Again, the tanks themselves, they don't, they don't blow up. That's not, that's not how an incident happens at any of these facilities, and again, Jody will explain to you. So I, I was a little surprised when I had the conversation, and you may have gotten a memo from Mr. Silvestri about the deluge system, again, which is just, you know, waters dumping on the tanks or whatever the case might be and why it's not a, a good thing to, to have. So pretty much, again, I thought we had satisfied the fire department six months ago in order to satisfy Mr. Silvestri, and again, it's a good thing. Mr. Downey does not want to, so again, the, the pressurization of, of, of the onsite hydrant, which, I shouldn't say onsite, it's offsite. Remember, that hydrant is going to benefit the neighborhood. So now I have a pressurized hydrant on the street to fight not only any incidents on our site, but anywhere up and down the street. And we talked about that at one time. You know, that's, that's, you can have the water, now again, it's, it's, it's even that much a better situation. So, so that being said, if, if, if any of you have any questions right now to ask me, and if not, I'll have maybe Jody, if you have any questions, I mean, she's the expert, you know, I'm only the messenger here, and I'm just going along for the ride. Again, you know the team that we've put together, and it's, again, these are, these, these, these people are, are incomparable in terms of their knowledge throughout the whole country, specifically in the Northeast, so that goes without saying. So Bruce, I don't know if you have any questions or anybody else, and any of the other board members have any questions?
Okay. Does any of the board members have any questions regarding this?
Not yet, but I'd like to listen to what she has to say.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to you, Jody, and...
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
For those of you that don't know me, or haven't been working with me for the last three years, my name is Jody Amadon, and I am a propane consultant out of Vermont with 32 years of industry experience. I first started working with Mr. Downey, was hired by him in May of 2019, so we're coming up on three years. I have put together a number of memos and explanations about the system. I have done PowerPoints for the community outlining what we have, are proposing and all the safeties that go into it, and especially outlining all the, the training. Unfortunately, we, we ran short of time at last, last meeting, and I wasn't able to explain all of those things to Mr. Silvestri. And I thought our meeting on April 8th was extremely productive. It, it was kind of clear that he still had some questions, and reading through his letter, there were some things that I don't think he caught. There's another safety device that's really critical, and it really drove our decision not to do the deluge gun. And that is a pneumatic system, which is thermal protection on the piping in the tanks. How that works is should you have a fire, it closes all of the supply of fuel, vapor and liquid. And the systems are required to have that. And so the industry has gotten away from the deluge systems on the tanks, but has still provided the water because incidents that we've seen since these, this code change in 2011 have been more related to trucks, diesel engines catching on fire or having tire problems. So we want to have the water onsite, but we want to have the water where we need it, and we want to leave that to the first responders to make that decision. So if there is an incident with a truck, we want to make sure that they're cooling the barrel of that truck and that the water is not being used elsewhere where it might not be needed. So that was part of our decision, and there was a lot of, a lot of conversation going on very quickly. And Mr. Silvestri's expert, Mr. Van Buren, he had tons of questions for me, and he went through the fire safety analysis that I prepared with a fine-tooth comb, making sure that I answered every question about where I came up with the response times, where I came up with water. He asked me to, to reference everything. He took nothing for granted. And I think I did a very good job of explaining everything to him, and I really felt when we walked away that, that he understood and, and they both understood that the thermal protection really takes care of the problem with the tanks, but we still thought it important to have that hydrant charged and to reduce the time should there be an incident on the street, so. There were a number of questions that I answered for him that he brought up in the first meeting. I wasn't sure if he wanted me to go back and rehash that, or, or if he just wanted me to address his most current, which I think I just did.
Yeah, I mean, if you could, I can't remember all the comments that were made. I don't know if you had some...
I, I made a little, a little summary of, because I think there was, there was over 50 pages of documentation there that he presented to the board after the March meeting. Yeah, let me get to it. The, the incidents that he referenced were all between 1973 and 1999, which do not, they would not have had the, the current safety standards, the internal valves, the pneumatics. They wouldn't have had any of the technology that we're talking about today. So that was one important thing. He also referenced RMP report, which is a risk management report. Those, those reports are not for retail bulk, they're for wholesale operations where you have, you might have a whole, a rail wholesale yard where you have transports coming in and going out. Those are not, not something that a, a dealer that just has a bulk plant would have to, would have to provide. Let me see what else there was. Most of the, the training, I think, is very important to, to emphasize, and we explained that to him, but for, for an operation like this, the first thing we do locally with the fire officials is we do a fire safety analysis. Then we do an operation and maintenance plan for the facility, and that's done once it's built. And that's what Mr. Hart will be training on. He'll be training the employees on the complete operation and the plant operation. The propane industry has a program called CTAP, it's Certified Employee Training. And although New York does not require it, Mr. Downey does, does provide it, and all of his employees are certified in CTAP. And that's why Mr. Hart is Mr. Downey's on retainer, because he is his CTAP trainer. So Mr. Hart will be doing the operation and maintenance training. He will also be doing the hazmat material training and the emergency action plan. He would also be doing fire service training, which you are required in the state of New York to train the local fire department, but we have also, we've also recommended that mutual aid be invited for that training. And I think that will, that would also take place, but those are things that we really needed to express and get across as, as part of this process.
You've addressed everything that was brought up. Does any of the, any of the board members have any questions at this time, for the applicant?
I do. Could you go over the thermal protection, those valves again? Where are they located, between the tank and where the trucks fill, or how do they work?
Okay. I wish I could pull the presentation that I gave November 13th. The thermal protection starts at the, in the bottom valves of the tank. We have what's called an internal, it goes up in the tank, and then it has an actuator which has this plastic tubing that runs along all of the pipe, liquid and vapor, and it runs all the way to the loading, the loading area. So if that pipe breaks, melts, cracks, loses, loses pressure, you cannot open the valves. And that, it's, it's mostly designed for the event of a fire, but if, it also works for a truck pullaway, too.
Okay. The word thermal was bothering me because it sounded like it was stripped by fire.
It, it, well, it, it's, that's what it's designed for, but it does many things. If it's not pressurized, it doesn't work, but it's designed to be thermal protection, it's designed to melt. And depending on whether it's a pneumatic system charged with nitrogen that melts at 212, or whether it's a cable system with fusible links that melt at 250 degrees, because sometimes, there's some old school systems that still use what we call cable links, and they still have that protection, they have a multiple link every five feet, so. But everything new that's going in is using this kind of system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there, any of the other board members have any questions?
Nothing.
No, okay.
No, not at this time.
Nope.
All right, so is there anyone from the public that has any questions at this time? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay. All right, seeing none. Just jump back here. There's no questions from the public, maybe we just address the, the two letters, most recent letters, one was from the planner, which I believe was minimal. Malcolm, if you just wish to, if you have any concerns for the applicant that need to be addressed?
It looks like everything has been addressed, only that we asked for revisions to the lighting plan to eliminate light trespass on the northern property line. The lighting plan has been revised, and the light trespass on the northern property line has been reduced, but is still present. And I don't know how this happened, but now there is light trespass on the southern property line that wasn't there before. So take a look at your lighting plan, see what you can do. Obviously, safety and security is at the utmost, particularly for a facility like this, but if you can, I mean, you're, you're very, very close to eliminating your light trespass. Examples of light trespass are very minor. And, and if you can address that, then you will have addressed our final outstanding comment.
Not, not a problem. I, I'd like to add, maybe it's not clear on the plans and we may or may not have discussed it previously. The light levels on the facility is not going to be at that light level that's shown on that lighting plan throughout the evening. So basically, what happens is the light levels go down, and it'll be at a, a, a lesser value, if you will, for safety reasons only. It gets cranked up, if you will, to that, I'll call it maximum, that you see on the plan, should a truck come in to fill up in, 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 in darkened hours in the wintertime, either in the morning or later on. So it's not that that spillover is going to be 24/7 type of spillover.
Yeah.
Only during that, that period of time. But we can take a look at it nonetheless, the spillover, if everybody takes a look at the lighting plan, we're talking about...
It's very, very minor.
A couple of feet here and a couple of feet there, notwithstanding.
With not, you know, with not outrageous lighting levels. You mentioned that you're proposing timers, is that noted on the plan? I didn't see that noted on your plans.
I'm not so sure they're going to be timers as, as much as motion activated. Is that a fair statement, Jody, how, how that lighting would work? Okay.
Would you be able to, I guess, you know, typically with these types of systems, you know, it's, it's, it's illuminated at what you're describing as maximum levels.
Correct.
When it's triggered and when it's not triggered, when the timer goes off or when, you know, there hasn't been motion for a long enough amount of time, it turns off, as opposed to dimming. Would you be able to submit a second lighting sheet of, of what is going to be proposed?
Not a problem.
On the dim and then the fully illuminated?
That's fine. And also, not a problem. And also to everybody's education, and I'm sure you're, you know this as planning board members, I mean, we're not in the olden days with the HPS and, and, and those types of lights. LEDs, we have the ability to crank up and crank down, if you will, put them on dimmers, have whatever light levels we want nowadays. Again, in the 21st century, it's not like you're either on or you're off, again, like 20 or 25 years ago. But that's still, we'll submit something. Again, it's not, I don't think it's a showstopper. It's, it's, it's not a big deal and we'll take care of it, that's fine.
That's good to know, though, Al, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Pete, if you had any...
Sure. So our engineer has been working with the project engineer as far as the stormwater plan, and I think they're, I think they're pretty much all set. The only thing that we ask for is when they go out to do the soil tests to confirm elevations of any rock or groundwater, or I believe there's some percolation tests that have to be done. If, if, if Troy can just go notify our office when that's going to be done, and... So the other stuff is minor, but Al, maybe you could just give us a quick update on where you, where you are with the DEC as far as the wetland buffer, and I think you're into the county health department, right, for water and sewer?
Yes, we are. So working backwards, I just saw a second memo from Dan Keeler today on the health department with three or four minor items. So I, I have to imagine that Troy will take care of those, and Dan was pretty, pretty quick to respond to his latest submittal there, so, you know, I can't imagine, there were no showstoppers, certainly, just a few Ts and a couple of Is that needed to be dotted. I sent a memo to Mike Nowicki today, who's our consultant and dealing with the, with the wetland situation, because I thought he told me a couple of weeks ago that, and you guys correct me if I'm wrong, that the DEC had X number of days to respond and to whatever application he submitted, and we're beyond that period. And I sent to him, I sent him a memo today saying, hey, have you heard anything since we spoke a week or two ago? And his response was nada, and that was it. I was, so I don't know how that usually works, Pete, if, if in fact you submit an application, you don't hear anything back, it's over and done? I don't know.
I think that that applies, Al, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that applies to Army Corps. That there's a certain time period. I don't think it applies to the DEC, but Mike would, Mike would know better than I, than I, but I think it's for Army Corps.
Okay, I'll double check with him. Of course, one of your comments here, Pete, was about the, the DEC, the validation block, and I don't know if that's the one that was already validated two years ago. I think you guys have in your records already, so I don't know what else you needed, or if that's another validation.
No, 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 I didn't, I'm...
Yeah, we, we submitted that to you. I have more copies and fortunately, when we get these things stamped, I asked for more than a half a dozen because we know they fly out of here, but we submitted yeah, six, seven, eight months ago, that was a request and we sent it to you. It may have been under separate cover, may not have been as part of Troy's package. But again, I have more copies, validated copies, not a big deal, I can get to you, it's, it's uh, not a problem.
As long as, 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 as long as, uh, you know, the town uh, and our office has a copy, that's, you know, fine. And if it's, and if, if it's already been done, great.
Yes, not, not a problem. Yeah, that goes back to two thousand nineteen.
Okay, alright, that's fine.
We had done, yep.
Okay, just double check that, but other than that, you know, we're down to some minor things, I, it's not gonna be an issue.
Okay, thank you. And, and Bruce, if I can, just put two cents in, I don't know if everyone um, in the public or the planning board, they know who Steve Van Buren uh, is. He's like the deputy coordinator uh, in the county, the Department of Emergency Response. So again, he was, he, he was with Silvestri at that meeting we had. So his uh, his, his, you know, his input was uh, you know, was well represented, so it's not like uh, Mr. Van Buren doesn't know what he's, what he's talking about. So just so everybody knows, um, he's a pretty sharp cookie there. And uh, and if he was satisfied, like I think uh, he was, uh, I just wanted to put it on the record of who Steve Van Buren is for those who didn't know.
Okay, alright, um. Yeah, I mean, it sounds it sounds to me like we've gotten everything addressed uh, from the previous meeting. Um, and with no new comments this evening. Um. I think we're in pretty good shape. Make sure with the, the, so I mean, both with the planner and engineer, uh, no concerns about closing the public hearing at this time?
I don't.
Okay.
I don't, I think that they've addressed all of, all of our concerns.
Okay. Alright, um, so at this point, if there is nothing, if there's no other questions, uh, from any of the board members, in motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any opposed? Okay, seeing there's none, go ahead and we'll close the public hearing at this time. Alright, so.
Bruce, have we done a secret determination yet? I don't think we have, right? Malcolm, now.
We had to close the public here, well, we had to conclude the public hearing. Malcolm, can you, you could confirm that we, we didn't propose a, um, for this, we needed to.
I don't believe that we issued a negative declaration of this project.
I was just, you know, checking.
Yeah.
Yes.
What do we have left? We've got, we've, we've, we've really got some outside, you know, agencies, right? That they're working on the DEC and the health, uh, health, health department. Um, Mike, did you, or uh, Mike, um, Al, did you get a letter from uh, Mike Sheehan or something on the approval of the driveways or email or something?
No, other than um, again, my meeting with Mike, um, again, it's gotta be a year ago. Um, uh, I don't think we have anything uh, official. He's certainly CC'd on all of these uh, multiple um reviews from you guys and my responses as well. I don't uh, think, if that's a prerequisite, again, you know, what I'm gonna be asking for tonight, of course, is if there, Malcolm can, can write up a resolution of final approval, subject to those. And if you need a letter from, from Mike to officially for the file, uh, I'm sure he'll have no, no problem doing that. But uh, again, he had no issue.
Yeah, we will. Yeah, we will need something for the file. I'll mention to, uh, I mentioned to Tom Harvey from our office. Tom, Tom meets with Mike, um, like regularly on, you know, various like items, so I'll mention to Tom about it too, so. You know, and I know that he mentioned to me, uh, Tom, that um, Mike was out there and he didn't, he didn't have any issues, but we just do need something in the file.
No, that's fine, and I'm not so sure, to be honest with you, Pete, that I even asked Mike officially, for your records, a formal letter. Mike has been very accommodating on this project and many other projects, so uh, he's, he's great to work with, so uh. So we can ask him or whoever can ask him, so we'll have something for the file, not a problem.
Okay, um.
Bruce, someone has their hand raised. A C Harrison?
Okay, I don't see.
No, okay, it just appeared on my screen.
Not on my screen, I don't see it.
Okay, okay.
Alright. Roll them back up, now I don't see any hands. Okay, um. Alright, so I guess, I mean, Al, it sounds like you have a few things left to get squared away?
A very few, uh, Mr. Chairman. That's why I'm, that's why I'm, 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 I'm gonna request and hopefully uh, the board concurs, I mean, again, to come back uh, to the board again and take your time uh, for a minor um a minor uh, light or detail about stormwater connections or the health department, you know, why, why do that? So if there's a way that we can, um, again, um, you know, I'd like to request some sort of uh, because we gotta come back anyway, right? So uh, the way, I gotta come back next month after you do the technically, when you, when you write, when you, um, when you tell Malcolm to, to do the resolution. So I'm a month away anyway, so I'd like to get that at least in the works right now, if we can. Does that make sense or?
Yeah, I, if you feel you can have the information taken care of, because I mean, the earliest we would be able to put you on anyway would be May seventeenth.
Well, there's very little information, again, that's, 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 I really need to, to, to get to you, uh, you know, again, such, so, so minor in nature. That, that's my opinion, I don't wanna minimize it. Certainly, um, I may or may not have the health department, I may or may not have the DEC sign off. I mean, again, I wanna you know.
Well, we could knock, I mean, you know, if, if it's gonna be a month and if, you know, assuming that the board does, does authorize, um, you know, the resolutions, you certainly get the letter from the highway superintendent, maybe you'll have, maybe you'll have, you know, the health department by then. You know, so there could be a bunch of things that are knocked off the list.
Oh, I'm sure they will be. I'm not gonna come back uh, with, with nothing taken care of between now and the resolution. We will be knocking off some of those items, but to come back another month and then suggested to uh, to have the resolution being drawn up, it just puts me another month behind. So uh, I wanna try to cut to the trees here.
Okay, so if we, if we authorize the resolution, um, because you know, the ultimate goal at the end of the day is to try to authorize it without, you know, minimal amount of items to be taken care of.
Right.
If we authorize a planner, it gives you, you know, roughly a month's time now to get everything squared away. Hopefully you can keep that to a minimum for, you know, that May seventeenth meeting.
Sure.
Okay, alright, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the planner to um, write the resolution of approval.
Make that motion.
Okay, motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, one opposed. Um, the motion, actually, let's go do a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Freenow?
Nay.
Mr. Marinacho?
Aye.
Mr. Maselli?
Aye.
Mr. Paraticos?
Nay.
Mr. Flower?
Aye.
Okay, um, seems we have a little issue at this point.
It was three, three, correct?
Three, two.
Right.
A three, two, but we are a seven-person board. Even though we only currently have six members, we still need to have a minimum of four members.
I don't know what's gonna, um, just to, to, to address the board, I don't know what what uh, what another month is going to accomplish taking care of literally two or three items on, on uh, the engineer's uh, uh, list. He has a, he has a list of maybe ten items and they have to do with, you need health department approval, you need DEC approval, you need this approval, we know what approvals we need. There's only three or four, if that, significant uh, issues and they're not even significant. Details relating to the SWIP, um, and/or how we're connecting catch basins, et cetera, et cetera. They're way minor, so I don't understand what another month is going to, is going to do.
Well, let me jump in a minute, Al, maybe, uh, maybe, you know, it's not anything to do with, uh, you know, my letter or Malcolm's letter. Maybe if we could hear from both Paul and uh, you know, Marco, it's just to kinda hear what their, you know, issues are and then that would probably, that would probably help you.
Okay.
Bruce, do you agree?
Yeah, I agree, I mean, obviously, I mean, I'll, I'll ask both of the members that voted now if they can address what their, the concerns are.
Well, I, it's Marco here, I'd like to see all those approvals and um, the, the whole thing just don't sit, doesn't sit well with me, so I just, I'd like to see all those approvals before I go ahead and give it a yeah.
Okay. Alright, um, well.
Yeah, I agree with Marcos about the approvals outstanding and I, I also really just don't like the location of the project, to be honest. I know it's twenty twenty-one, problems are few and far between, but a problem at a place like that is, is never really a small issue and uh, there's too much residential in my perspective. And I think there's probably better places in the town to look at to put something like that.
Okay. Okay, I, I, and Al, we're, you know, we have a, a limited, you know, number of members tonight, you know, so we have one member that's out this evening. My recommendation is to get everything together, get it into the town. Um, and then we can, we'll put you on to the May seventeenth meeting and then go forward from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, um. Alright. Okay, our, going down our agenda, the next item for this evening uh, was discussion for Hudson Valley Lighting, amended site plan, amended site plan approval. Um, that item was um, asked to be removed from the agenda this evening on behalf of the applicant. So our next item on the agenda is the Torres ground-mounted solar panels. Who do we have on tonight to as the applicant for the panels?
My name's Jill Southland, I am the contractor with Plug PV that will be installing the system and Adrian Torres is the homeowner. We're both on.
Okay. Alright, um. Okay, let me start out with um, you, you, both of you have received the letters from both the town planner and the town engineer?
That's correct.
Okay. Alright, um. Yes, you're not. I guess, um, if you wish, could you just go through what's being proposed here on this site? Uh, explain to the rest of the board what were you proposing? Um, so they're aware of it?
Sure, Mr. Torres uh, owns a property, his house is approximately six hundred feet off the road. It's a very, very wooded area, uh, can't even see his house from the road. And what we plan on doing is putting a solar array, a residential solar array uh, on his property to generate his electricity. It's a ground mount. We have probably done fifty, sixty jobs in your town already. We don't do many ground mounts, probably about five percent of our jobs are ground mounted systems.
Okay, um, and the size of the um, the proposed uh, system that you're putting on, how many square foot panel?
Each panel is three feet by five feet and I think, I believe it's thirty-six panels for this array.
They were what, three feet by five feet?
That's correct.
And thirty-six panels, five hundred and forty square feet. Okay, um. Did the, obviously you've gone through the, the planner's letter?
Uh, we have, yes, uh, our project manager was unable to get on the call tonight because her five-year-old daughter just contracted COVID today at noon. So I'm the sales director, I'm very familiar with this project. So I can speak to it.
Okay, um, is the, well, let me, let me have the planner go through some of the, the items in his letter. It seems like we're right on the edge here, without having all the information in front of us. Malcolm, if you wanna kinda go through your, your comments real quick?
Yeah, so I've, I've cited a few different sections of the code, um, where we are hoping for a little bit of, a little bit of additional information so that we can verify that the, the project is compliant with the code. Let me, for example, we need to know things like the distance of the solar array from uh, the property lines that surround it. Um, there's a provision of the code that discusses uh, any changes to impervious cover, need to calculate in the foundation of this. So that would be, you know, added to the bulk table. We obviously need a bulk table added for the existing site. And also the, the size of the existing structure onsite, because there's a provision of the code discussing the square footage of the solar array which you provide uh, only being fifty percent or less. And the square footage of the, the existing primary structure, and so we'll need to know the size of that.
Are you referring to the size of the panel system compared to the size of the house?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and first you asked, you brought, did bring up about, and we're very familiar with, creating uh, like camouflage or coverage of the system. You, you could never, nobody could ever see this system because there is no neighbors on either side of him that could visually see it. He basically lives in the forest.
Sure, that's, I don't think that that is what I'm referring to, maybe I've misspoken.
Uh, I brought, I brought that up because we, we do run into that in different areas where if it's in a residential area, they want us to uh, plant four-foot evergreens.
No, the only thing that we have uh, in concert with that is that uh, we ask for a, a ten-foot brush-free area maintained around the ground-mounted solar.
Gotcha.
Um, and so if a note can be added to the plans of that, to that effect, um, that is another one of our comments, but just going through, right, we need the square footage of the building uh, to verify that the area of your solar collectors are not gonna exceed fifty percentage of the square footage of the building. The code stipulates that all The code stipulates that all portions of the ground-mounted solar energy system need to meet the applicable setback requirements for primary structures in that zone. So it's important that you add the bulk table, uh, for that zone to this. Um. So that, you know, so that we can compare those setbacks to the distances that you will have also added to the plans. As to the distance of the solar array from those project, from those.
I, I'm a little confused on that. The, the bulk table for that zone, I don't know exactly what you mean by that.
So the bulk table for that zone is going to be the, the required setbacks, the maximum, um, impervious cover, things of that nature. Uh, you can find that in the table of bulk regulations, um, for the town. Underneath, uh, this zoning designation, right? We have different setbacks, we have different bulk reg, uh, requirements for all of the different zones in the town. Um, they'll be specific to that zone. And so this zone will have. You know, a list of bulk requirements and we need to verify that these solar panels are going to comply with all of the same setback requirements. That, uh, Mr. Torres's house would have to comply with.
Oh, okay, perfect. Okay, okay, now I understand. Thanks for making that clear. Okay.
No problem. Um, we already discussed the 10-feet, uh, brush-free area. And that can just be a note that you add to the plans?
Got it written down already.
Um.
Now, is that front, back, side, everything, right?
Yeah, think of it as a 10-foot buffer around that solar array.
Now, this is, I have to ask this because this is in conflict with many other towns that they don't want 10-foot brush-free. They want evergreens planted right up next to the border of it. So this is, this is a strange request, but.
There are, that we do have visual impact associated requirements. I don't think any of them would apply to this proposal.
Okay. Sounds good.
Um. The other one would be, uh, this might be a better question for Barbara. When this application came in. Um, the zoning district for Mr. Torres's property was a part of the application. That zoning designation does not match the official zoning map on the town website. But that map is also a little old, so I may be working with more outdated information. I just wanted to verify the zoning district of the property in question.
I'll check that tomorrow. I don't have the application with me at home.
Okay, um, on the, for the record, uh, the application suggests that it's R, uh, R40. And the map on the town website suggests that it would be R80, but that could have been changed in the last five, six years.
Right, some of them were upzoned, so I'll check that in the morning.
Okay. Um. Uh, the one thing that we, uh, I did mention, but hopefully we did not move, move past too quickly. In the bulk table, uh, very few of those bulk regulations that we discussed are going to change. Typically, we ask for an existing and a proposed to see what has changed. Very little of that is going to change. Uh, except for your impervious cover calculation. At some point, the site plan for this property would have done an impervious cover calculation. And our zone discusses the need for not the surface area of the panels. But the surface area of the foundational pads to be factored into impervious cover calculations.
Gotcha, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep, it sure does.
Okay. Um. This is a, this is a side note, but if in future submissions, the numbering of the sheets. If they could be cleaned up, I noticed a lot of the sheets had repeating numbers. Um, and I, I'm worried that it will make review, particularly when, you know, Mr. Sotero and I are discussing different elements of the plan. We make reference to certain sheets of the plan. Uh, several of the sheets had recurring numbers. So if the, the site plan numbering can be cleaned up in the future submission, that would be very useful. Um, we're also gonna need certain, uh, basic site plan elements on the site plan. Uh, the project survey, approval block, owner's consent note, things like that. Um, Dutchess County Parcel Access suggests that there's, uh, Army Corps wetlands, um, and flood plains on the site. Um, if they can be shown on the plans, just so that we can verify that this is not going to impact them. If they do, uh, you'll probably need to seek a town wetland disturbance permit.
Okay, show the wetlands on the plans.
Mm-hmm. Also, uh, your, your EAF did not include an EAF mapper. Um, which pinged certain useful things. For example, uh, the Indiana bat was pinged as an endangered or threatened species on site. Um, and the site was also pinged for, uh. Uh, archaeological sensitivity. So, um, you may want to reach out. I don't imagine that this application is going to. Uh. Infringe on those archaeological sensitivities, but we need to do that due diligence and reach out to them. Um, do you know if this proposal is going to include the clearing of any trees?
It is not.
Okay. Um, that shouldn't be an issue then, but you will want to reach out to the New York State DEC. Um.
Next question. I was gonna say, where do I get this info? So the EF, the, the EAF did not include the EAF mapper. The site is pinged for archaeological sensitivity. And you mentioned the species of bats. Could you mention that again?
The Indiana bat.
Well, he flew a long way.
I know, right? Hoosier out here. Um. Yeah, so I guess, I mean. Traditional practices don't require that mapper, but the mapper is useful to us to, to see which outside agencies might be interested here. Um, so I went through the process of just, you know, going into the mapper website and selecting the site to see if any of those things get pinged.
You, you did mention that the agency I would reach out to, who was that again? DEC?
That's going to be, uh, the DEC for the Indiana bat. Um, and the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation. To make sure that this is not going to disturb archaeological sites.
Give me the last one, New York State Parks.
New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Historic Preservation.
I don't think I've given my project manager enough credit on how much they do when they, we run into this. I know we've dealt with these agencies before, but I am writing everything down, so thanks for being patient. Okay, so once we get these, these items, you know, taken care of on our checklist, do we forward them to you, Malcolm, or who do we forward these to?
You would forward them to, uh, the town I would go to, to be and Barbara. They'll make sure that I see that. Um, and they'll also, you know, they'll make sure that everybody sees that. And that way, you send it to the town. It's in one central location and we all have access to it.
Okay, I'm pretty confident we could probably get to this, uh, in a short period of time. Would you, would this be able to be revisited and move forward on, I heard you mention the date, May seventeenth of your next meeting? Would that be possible? Or sooner?
We probably wouldn't be able to, to do anything sooner, but, um. I'm not the one to ask in terms of scheduling, uh, meeting agendas. Barbara?
Uh, well, the next meeting we have is May seventeenth. And everything would have to be in, within the next two weeks so that yourself and Pete could review it before the seventeenth.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, to be honest, I don't think you'll hear back from New York State Office of Parks Recreation. Et cetera, and the DEC within two weeks, but we can try. We can put you on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, with the hope that you have that information.
Okay, so you're probably right there. So let's just, uh, cross our fingers that we do. And we'll let you know, obviously, we don't want to take time on the agenda that somebody else could use. So we'll let you know how we're making out with that. You said we have two weeks. We'll check it out. Why don't you put us on the agenda and we'll, we'll work our tails off getting that for you.
Okay, um, yeah, I guess it would be based upon getting this submission into the, um. Into the planning board secretary. So as long as she has it within the two weeks, um. I believe it could be put on the agenda at that time.
That's you, Barbara?
No, B. Ogunty is the secretary to the board.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Um, did, uh, Pete, did you have any, anything that needed a guess or did Malcolm pick up?
Malcolm, Malcolm covered our one comment on the, uh, the wetlands and the flood plains, same thing on, uh, Dutchess County Parcel Access. So the only other thing would just be to show on the map. Um, silk fence, uh, down, down gradient of where, uh, you know, the solar panels are going to be installed. That was it.
Okay. All right. Now, does any of the board members have any questions regarding this project?
No, nothing.
Nothing.
None.
All right. Seeing no other comments, um, I guess we've. Pretty much gone through everything. Um, so we'll await your submission and move forward from there.
Thank you very much. I got a little to-do listing and, uh, we'll get, uh, get it back to you just as soon as we can. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good.
Bye-bye.
All right. Okay, so being that's the. That's the last item on the agenda for the evening. Um, if there's no other business to discuss. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Okay, motion carries, so. See you guys, uh, May third.